Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord, and for all the being blessings of life. And God, we thank you so much for the rain that you blessed us with. O'er God, we just pray that you be with each and every one of these commissioners. Say, "Sir," and God, I just pray a special prayer for Cade. You continue to touch his body. In Jesus Christ's name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. In the great republic of which stands one nation under thy God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Greg Brooks.
Here.
Debbie Davis.
Here.
Daniel Deal.
Here.
Dewey Eskmon.
Here.
Mark Evans.
Here.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Here.
John Pippen Jr.
Here.
Martha Trancom.
Here.
James Witty.
Here.
First on the agenda is approval meetings previously.
Motion to approve other approved minutes.
Second.
Got a motion by John, second by Samantha. Any discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Eskmon.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippen Jr.
Yes.
Martha Trancom.
Yes.
James Witty.
Yes. Next is approval reports of office.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by John, second by David. Any discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Eskmon.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippen Jr.
Yes.
Martha Trancom.
Yes.
James Witty.
Yes. Next is approval of mullerings. We got one. Is that all we had today?
Yes.
It is Jeffrey David Taylor from Cleveland, Tennessee, who works for First Dollar Beer Bank. Make a motion to approve. Second. Got a motion by James, second by John Hoyt. Any discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Eskmon.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippen Jr.
Yes.
Martha Trancom.
Yes.
James Witty.
Yes. Number four is budget amendments. Do we have any budget amendments?
No budget amendments. I do have a question on that. County Executive, have you received a notice so far as to your budget being passed out?
We still not had one come in. But just saying that we do, I'll be sure that everyone that is not coming in has it.
Next, physical letter of confirmation, County Executive.
I have a physical strength and efficient government financial confirmation letter as the three-star program requires. This document confirms that Polk County is taking the following actions in accordance with the requirements of the three-star program. County Mayor has reviewed the county commission and its official meeting. The county's debt management policy is current and on file with the Comptroller of the State Office. The purpose of this is to require and ensure that the local elected officials are aware and knowledgeable of the county's debt management policy. It acknowledges that debt management policy in Polk County is on file in the office. The minutes of this meeting are being included in this document. On the back it says that annual cash flow forecast and the minutes of this meeting will be included in this document, and it's going to be acknowledged on the 26th day of December 2019.
Are you leaving this?
It's just a...
Like a declaration?
It says, this is 26th day. It's acknowledged. It is the 26th day of September is the letter that I have. If that need to be changed, I can have that changed.
What's it say?
September.
That's...
Today.
It's on...
It's just a letter, as far as I know, to interrupt James. It's just a letter of acknowledgement. Does...
Right.
Okay. It's just, just acknowledge that.
All right. Is that it for that?
Yes.
Uh, boiler fire update, County Executive.
RFP were turned out. It was in your packet. PSI Environmental Systems Incorporated was the only one that turned the bid in for our boiler fire. They came out, looked at it, given you all or all of us here, as you can see what they believe are the sections and they cleaned out, to reassemble the boiler, to put all new parts that they can find that are malfunctioning right now. It cost $15,428. I've also talked with them as far as to show myself and whoever else would want to learn how to blow the boiler down on a daily basis until we get the situation resolved so we can have some heat. But this was the only RFP that was submitted to the County Executive's office. So if you all want to move forward, I'll contact them to get started on the repair. I know you don't think about the heat right now, but...
Is this the same, is this the same group that done the original install on last bid?
No. This company here is the company that the boiler was purchased from.
Okay.
They did not install it.
That's right.
It was purchased from them.
That was done locally, right?
Yes. The install was done locally. So this is for them to come back and to fix the body.
Will any of this have any warranty with it or just fix it?
I would say not because of the age and the conditions of the body. But like I said, I will be sure myself if I have to do it today that we get some of the rot now within the courthouse so this boiler will function properly.
Motion to approve the bid.
Second. Got a motion by John. Did you say that one?
Yes.
Second by Mark to approve the bid from PSI for boiler repair. Any discussion?
I'm here where it's talking about the city water pressure and then talking about the water failed to 22 to 25 PSI. Is that one of the problems with the, has been one of the problems with the boiler that the pressure's not been high enough to keep the water in there?
No, it's not connected to the city water. This is non-potable water. It has its own pump on to it. The city water has its own pressuring system, but then it goes into a reservoir for this boiler. If it was connected to the city water, it's a cross connection. It could not occur. So it might be an issue with the pump that's on this boiler. I don't know for sure, but it's not city water pressure problem.
This says there's no guarantee at all. Does that mean if they do all this work and it still don't work?
Right.
We're just stuck?
They put that in writing, but like I said, one of their technicians came out to do the best of his knowledge. These are the problems that he has found with it. Took an off inspection plate, which are still off. Inspection plates are still taken off the side of it. So it could be seen the cracks that are within those chambers.
I'd assume it'd be a month before we cut a check, ain't we?
Yeah, I'll wait as long as possible until they get that done.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Eskmon.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippen Jr.
Yes.
Martha Trancom.
Yes.
James Witty.
Yes.
Next is a show, show warrant thing, County Executive.
The RFP came back in as well for the show warrant. It was in your packet. Jeff Harris was the only one that submitted a bid at $98,000, which is $23,000 over the amount of the grant. Mr. Harris also sent me a letter, wrote a letter in the office the other day that if, because I asked him about cutting costs, if there was any way in the world would that be in that much for the amount of the grant. He says that if it would work out with the trustees to perform the demolition, that he would cut $6,000 off the bill from the 98, so that pull it down to 92. Talked to Greg Paxton. Greg was supposed to contact and see as far as if there was anything or any way that a new building grant for the show warrant. And I want you to understand, it's just the center part. It's not the whole show warrant for 98,000. It is just the center, not the side sheets. So that's why I was coming back to you all if you want to move forward with Mr. Harris to inform it or if you want us to research again or...
I think it's just too much.
Yeah, when they give them the amount of grants, we've got to have a building committee meeting, turn this most up one day next week. You think building committee could feel we could shave off that?
I don't care. I've heard, I've told Greg as well.
Have him come.
And have him to come as well, because I know Greg's and Greg Paxton's another one that would like to see, like everybody else wants to see something done with show warrant. But I'm not taking dollars over. Told me that the show warrant was built for $10,000. I know it years ago, but when you go look at it and you hear that $98,000 or $90,000, 20,000 to 30,000 more than what we've got in form for grant.
Well, it'd be crazy not to use a grant, but same time we need to whittle down before we don't go over the grant amount, too. I make a motion to reject the bid proposal.
Second.
Motion by John, second by David to reject the only bid. Any discussion?
What did he find out about the new building?
He wasn't for sure. I haven't got back with him yet. I just spoke with him the other day whenever I was at his office. But I'll have him to come for the building committee meeting on Friday. He can come. That way he can talk to the commission as well.
We need to have a building committee meeting. Mayor, or whoever the new chairman is, can get with everybody on the committee and let them know maybe one night next week at the Justice Center. Mayor, new chairman will contact everybody hopefully by tomorrow and see. People at Justice Center, Mayor.
Roll call.
We haven't had a discussion that way.
I asked, was there any discussion?
Did you?
I'm sorry. There's one thing about this. This, of course, this has been started, I think, the latter
part of 2017, and then I think I saw it was signed in either January or early part of 2018. Tried to find out how long that stayed open, and I was unable to do so before the meeting. But the only, we're kindly up against a rock in a hard place. I understand the building out there, and I've asked the same question that some's already asked, you know, why do you got to go back with the old building? But it's for restoration, and it's through the tourism grant that was received probably in 2018. And then the reason I say we're up against a rock in a hard place is if we fail to go through with it, then it's going to be harder to get grants after that. That's the bottom line, you know. And, you know, like I say, I understand the situation with the building, and I don't, I'm not, that's not my preference either. I'm just letting you know that that's one of the problems in receiving grants if you don't follow through with it.
I wonder if, is these bids being seen by everybody like they need to be being seen, you know? That's what I'm wondering. I mean...
You know, I don't, I don't care as far as that goes to reach out to even, an even further audience. Another life we had came in from Saudi Dacey, if I'm not mistaken. They were from a little farther out, and they were a little cheaper than Jeff was. But I mean, and I don't care one bit. Wouldn't talk about that in that, in the buildings and grants committee meeting as far as, as Greg says as well, talking about shaving some more hair. The guy that came through with this and wrote out everything, or wanted everything for the RFP, it was very vague, very vague. Whenever Greg sit down with me, and we sit down and try to make it, you know, break it down even more so that way we could see some more cost savings. So we'll discuss that and then see as far as put it in a bigger newspaper or a bigger area.
Yeah. Well, it, it's the main part of the building. That's where all the money's at in fixing it. That's what makes it probably sign. But the other one was 90-something thousand as well, wasn't it?
It was 92, if I'm not mistaken.
Them two bands that consist, that's probably right on the money as far as work's going to be done. So that's why we need to, I guess, look, see if there's anything we can take off the job or something to get it down to the ground and that. I don't know if you can, we'll look and see.
Yeah. Like we said, maybe, maybe try one more time with a larger base of, you know, contractors, just to see, you know. I know what James is saying. I mean, you know, we got to act on this.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Eskmon.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippen Jr.
Yes.
Martha Trancom.
Yes.
James Witty.
Yes.
Next is something I had on my mind, but I'm going to tell you what the next month meeting we get, we've got a guy we want to meet with and get us some more information. And we're actually two people, and we're not been in contact with them unless they have got the resolution. So I'll tell you what the next month. After that is sanitation update, County Executive.
The sanitation committee, which is chaired by Mr. Evans, has asked it to make an announcement for sanitation committee meeting. It's going to be Monday here at the courthouse at 7:00. I'll have the builder from Baker Ways be here, which is Mike Wall. Miller Matthews with Co-Net, if I'm not mistaken, is how you pronounce that. His bid did not meet specifications. He cut the pre-crusher compactor to four yards instead of a five yard, and his explanation for that was, was to save money. But I told him that he's already hired, and thus if he's willing to come back in, he's going to be on the $25,000 or more just to meet specifications, and he did not meet them. So Mike Wall will be here with Pennebilly Baker Ways for the committee.
Anything else? Anybody?
Is that sanitation meeting here at the courthouse?
Monday, 7:00. Is that right, Mark?
Yes.
Moving on, industrial development board, County Executive.
Industrial development board, a lot of commissioners have asked. We're going to start taking the applications for that this month. Anybody that would want to apply, I encourage you to do so. I would also ask that a resume be attached to that, just so we can see the background of what you're applying for, as I said last month. Not just because you're a good old boy and you can get up, take pictures of a dozen eggs and put themself on market book, on Facebook Marketplace. We want people that are qualified, that can step in, that can help cities grow. Their, the terms are for a six-year term, but they're staggered. There's seven people that will be on this board. There's a two-year, a four-year, and a six-year term. And it staggers them out, so that way you don't have all seven at one time. Know some of the updates on this that I have is, is there's an annual report that needs to be filed. It's past due right now, but our county attorney's going to go ahead and get that taken care of. We're also going to have, for these people that apply, you have to be a county resident. No county official can serve on this board, and no county employees can serve on this board. And it is a non-paying board. That's the rules and regulations set forth. That's not something that I come up with. That's something our county attorney has dug into. I know a lot of people have said that somebody from here or somebody from there, if you're a county employee or if you're an elected official, you're, you will not be eligible to serve on this board.
It's a seven-member board?
It's a seven-member board. And I encourage any and all from throughout the county attorney in, I'd love to see some District 3, District 2, District 1. And I'm hoping that next month I'll have some of those applications for you as a board to sit down, as a commission to decide on who you want to serve. So they will come through the meeting, and it is a recommendation to you to approve or disapprove.
Sounds good.
That way, telling everybody, and if you don't care to put that in paper and hard and heavy and advertise it.
Mail them to you, bring them to you, email them, how do you want?
Either way, if they want to email popecoexec@outlook, that'll get them directed to Volks' desk. If they want facts, and I don't have the fax number, I can't remember it off the top of my head. Or they can email them in, BO Box 128, 37307. I'll get them right to them. And I would ask that they attach up. Mr. Resonant?
Mr. Chairman, we have one item we need to address by suspension. If you'd like to do that for 6, 11, 12.
We got a request to suspend rules for a...
I didn't see the amendment.
The den?
Yeah.
Well, we can do it like it's the den. We can suspend rules when they do, for what John Hoyt's got.
Okay.
John Hoyt's got something to go over. Make the rules suspend. Anything about frank motions?
I'm making a motion to suspend the rules for the electronic monitoring engine fund request from the treasury. We need to vote it up or down. Either way, we just have to, we have to address it.
My second.
Got a motion by John Hoyt, and a second by David to suspend rules. Any discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Dewey Eskmon.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippen Jr.
No.
Martha Trancom.
Yes.
James Witty.
Yes.
All right. We both suspend the rules. Go ahead, John Hoyt. Somebody agreed that document. Bottom line's, the resolution asking us to enter into a cost share agreement with Department of Treasury, I believe, and for this fiscal year and the next fiscal year. My understanding is not that the judge or the sheriff are pushing for this to happen. And I think we're using this judge year tonight.
Yes.
You are familiar with this?
Yes.
And I don't want to speak...
Yes, Commissioner. I can, if you'd like me to.
If you don't care, just kind of...
Sure, absolutely. What it does is, it's, it used to be that if a person was indigent and Judge L. and myself, or Judge Fryver, or Judge Don, he ordered them to be released with a GBS ankle monitor, built with a transdermal alcohol device that would monitor whether they, like on a DUI, where they'd been drinking to notify the court if they violated the conditions of their bond. If they were indigent, there was a fund that was paid strictly out of the treasury in Nashville that would pay for that. Well, they changed the rules, I think this or the law, I should say, this July 1st, where it's now 50/50. If Polk County puts in 30,000, they'll put in 30,000. If Polk County puts in 100,000, they'll put in, it's a 50/50 matching. So now it's not matched at 100%. So that's my understanding of how it, how it works. Of course, it's going to benefit the bigger counties that have the funds to do that. You know, we used it because it was funded by the state. But and again, it's generally about $10 a day for a person to pay for that. They're trying to work with getting the funding down to where it's a little bit less. Talked to Rich Kinlan, who's with misdemeanor probation here in Polk County. Bradley County, I believe, voted to fund it $60,000 next year, not this year. So that means they'll be matched, or no, I believe 30,000 in Bradley County, which means they'll be matched another 30,000. So I just, you know, and again, I'm not, I don't, I don't handle funding, obviously, for the county. That would be you all. But, but again, it is a big financial contribution. Although, you know, it is an option in the future if we have it there because it gets the people out of the jails that are the nonviolent offenders. But it is a lot of money at this time. And that's, that's, you know, I don't want to necessarily say I'm not in favor of it, but it's, it costs money. So, and I know where our budget was last year. So it's certainly something we can, you know, keep in the back of our minds in the future if need be. But no, it is a big funding bill as far as I can tell.
Now, my understanding is the interlock, the interlock system that actually sits in the cars.
That is still being 100% funded.
That's still 100% by the state.
You are correct, Commissioner. Yes, that's 100% funding for a person to get a restricted license. That ignition or what device that they blow into, device in the car to start the car, to get their restricted license as a requirement of their restricted license is still 100% being funded by the state.
So this won't affect that?
That will not affect that, yes. So, so that is, that is the difference between the two of those. So thankfully, those are still being funded 100% by the state.
I make a motion not to enter into the electronic monitoring engine fund program with the state.
Second.
Got a motion by John Hoyt, a second by Samantha, not to enter into the agreement with the state. Any more discussion?
Is there a limit on the money you have to put in, or minimum maximum?
To my knowledge, they just, they match. It's 50%. It's a, it's a, it's a match, whatever. I don't know that they, I've not heard of a cap. So whatever the commission votes to, to put in, they will match it exactly.
So if we don't put any in, and you order them to have the ankle bracelets, we have to pay 100% of it?
I, I, I have the ability to order them to pay for it out of their own pockets.
And if they can't?
And if they can't, they have to stay in jail. It's a commission of mine.
And how much is it in jail versus how much it is?
My understanding, and again, you have to ask the sheriff, because that's on his end of how much it costs. Are you talking about how much it costs to keep an inmate per day?
How much it costs?
My understand, I don't know the answer to that. I think it's around $10 a day, but don't quote me on that. You'd have to ask the sheriff how much it costs to keep an inmate per, per day in the jail, 24-hour period. But I believe that's, it's around there.
Approximately, how many people are ordered to have some type of number? You can give us for an average of how many people?
Just depends on the facts of the case. I could get an average. I would say that there might be one or two per month, and then we might go two months and I might not order one. I can't tell you what the criminal court judges are doing. I could certainly find out, Judge Donigan, Judge Fryver, and let you know. But it's just going to depend on the severity and the facts, the facts of the case. So I might have a couple that pop up that I think needs it, or the DA makes a motion for it, or the defense attorney wants their client out of jail or makes a motion for it. But in that case, they're generally paying for it. And then we might go several months and there not be a case that, that requires it. So it's just very, it's fact-based.
Out of 10 cases that you may give this order for, how many out of the general 10 may be under the energy program? I'm sorry.
The majority.
The majority?
Yes. Absolutely, the majority. I would say 85 to 90% of our cases in Polk County have a public defender, which would mean they would qualify for indigent. Again, that's, sometimes people are, they qualify for the public defender, and then grandma goes out and hires them a private attorney. You know, that still doesn't change the fact that on paper, they're 30.
Your motion is for 2020?
No, the motion's to not enter into the agreement.
Do what?
The state's want us to, his motion is for the county not to enter into the agreement. That's writ.
With, well, if 2020 is the agreement we're talking about now, right?
Well, it's either 20 or 2021.
Right.
Need not to enter into the agreement for this coming up year. Now, according to this, we have to address this following year as well. So we would be to not enter into either agreement, 2020 or 2021.
But it's pretty much been from the judges and the sheriffs recommending that it's not to enter in.
That was my understanding when I talked to Ms. Lowen.
Yes.
And just strictly because of a funding issue, Commissioner, that's why. It's not that I don't think it's not good. I just know that we're not made of money here. That's the only reason they're that. And there's, there's other ways to get around that. Not always, but there are. You just have to, have to take it on a case like this basis.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion. John, you made it safe. A second by Samantha. Is any more discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Yes, make your object.
Yes, yes, Commissioner.
All right.
Daniel Lille?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenholt?
Pass.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
James Woody?
No.
Seven yes, one no, and one pass.
Next is election chair person. We'll take nominations, don't require a second.
I'm gonna make Debbie Davis for chair.
Anybody else?
None, or James Woody?
Anybody else? Nomination cease. Hold up, John, I'll go on over. First one, usually the first one, nominates first one, but we're gonna... We'll vote on Debbie Davis first. Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Pass.
Daniel Lille?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenholt?
No.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
James Woody?
No.
Six yes, one no, one pass.
Two no's and two yes.
Two no, two no, sorry.
I'm gonna hand the gavel over to Debbie, she's new chair.
We'll get a picture that out. We can do that. We'll have the vice chair.
So, next will be the election of the vice chair person. Any nominations?
Making motion nominate Jeremy Kinsey.
Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Lille?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenholt?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Pass.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
And yes, one pass.
We forgot, do you know any thing about, is there anybody here from the school? This, uh, uh, about purchasing these buses and things?
Who are you?
What happened? You're from the school? What could it be? You look to me, how they are here? Uh, Robbie, do you know anything?
I've not, I've not heard of the purchase of the bus from the shore of education myself. But I'm, the only thing is what I just asked, Bishop Pipinger, is that was not something that's already in their budget, if they're just, well, basically known, the commission itself, that they're gonna move some of their funds for rent. I'm not for sure on that. I know on the reported debt obligation, but that's what that is. I have one copy of it, um, that they're requesting to move, uh, two-hundred thousand dollars by way of the inner fund tax revenue anticipation note for the cafeteria fund, a hundred and fifty thousand, and a fund of a hundred and fifty thousand, and a federal project fund of fifty thousand for a total of two-hundred thousand to be moved from the general purpose school fund for operating purposes until those funds begin receiving revenue. I only have one copy of that, but if anybody would want, Patrice told me that she would have more of those tomorrow, or she could email them to you, or the papers, if anybody wants that. But I don't know of the, the bus, but I know of the debt obligation, and that all that is, is to inform the commission, that's in the budget, and they're just going to win in until that money comes out.
On the debt obligation, we have to acknowledge official chat, uh, happen for the minutes of the commission.
Yes, it just has to be that it was acknowledged, and that, that I just read off, that the two-hundred thousand dollars is coming by way of a hundred and fifty thousand, federal project fund, fifty thousand, or total of two-hundred thousand to be moved to the general purpose, purpose.
On the debt obligation, I make a motion to acknowledge, uh, notice of the debt obligation document, and spread upon the minutes of the commission.
Got a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by John Oates and second by Dewey. All right, any more announcements or discussions or... All right, roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Lille?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenholt?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
And yes, one pass.
Yeah, I will say, it's good to say the school system, buying buses, as named, uh, we got the buying a while back. It's starting to fire those buses, come off the road after so many years, for so many miles, and, uh, we got, uh, one time, we had about a...
Six at one time?
Yeah, or eight.
Or eight.
I mean, really, six, maybe about two or so. I'm glad the school system done, using a bus one, two bus one, to prevent that from happening anymore. It was, uh, how much was it? It was...
I don't remember what, it, it was expensive.
Uh, one other thing, while Robbie's out there, uh, uh, the committees and things will just, everybody, everything will just remain the same till next month, and then anybody that wants to, uh, get with me to, uh, say they don't want on something, or they want on something, or anything like that, please feel free to do so. And we'll try to keep everything, if everybody's happy with the way everything is right now, we'll try to keep a large portion of it going like it's going, you know? Uh, but anyway, if anybody's got any changes or desires or non-desires, I should say, it ain't like nobody locked your door down on this stuff, 'cause it's a... Anyway, just, uh, you know, let me know, and, uh, we'll, we'll get it, get us a plan together.
So, sanitation committee for Monday night, be the same?
Yeah.
The building committee next week.
Yeah, yeah. We'll just leave everything going like it is, if that's good with everybody?
I've talked to the director of school, Janet Jones, and it's just an acknowledgement, uh, they brought this up in their school board meeting last, uh, their previous school board meeting, and it's just to move the money within their budget that's already there, and it's already set aside on their line items. So, it would be just like the report of their debt obligations, what you all just did, it's just an acknowledgement that you all are acknowledging that, motion second for them to do that. It's nothing from the county side, it's within their budget. Anything over, uh, I think there's, with a hundred thousand dollars, they have to acknowledge to the commission, the commission, the money around, so, that's what that is. And I'm sorry I didn't have that earlier, I do apologize.
Uh, I'd like to make the motion to, of acknowledgement for the bus, uh, purchase documents, and have it spread upon the minutes of the county.
You just did that, didn't you?
Now, this is on the bus purchase. The other was a debt obligation.
The other was the debt obligation.
I'll second it again.
John made the motion, Dewey second, uh, roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Lille?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenholt?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
And yes, one pass.
Okay, any more announcements or confiances or discussions?
I got one announcement.
Robbie?
Uh, October the eighteenth at eleven a.m., the bridge over the Holosse River, or bridges, we should say, uh, north of Benton will be dedicated, be Bill Norwood Bridge, will be October the eighteenth at eleven a.m.
Any thing else?
I got one, Michael.
Go ahead.
I don't remember what his last meeting or when it was, we voted on increasing the tax, and the school board had to approve it too.
Yes, sir, sir.
Okay, what did they?
That was a nine, nine yes on the, uh, local option sales tax. There were nine yes, and it has been sent to the, uh, county election commission, it's been humped up from the, the Department of Treasury. So, it looks to be standing good as far as the document said.
I think we could've got it on ballot without their approval, but we couldn't lock the money. We couldn't, yeah, but if they didn't make the money to go to new school construction, they had to agree to it, so. If it does pass on the ballot, then we for new school construction.
Now, Jim, uh, Heritage Day will be here at the courthouse on October twenty-sixth. It's from ten till four o'clock, local vendor will be set up, so they'll remember that coming out this summer to put on. I'll be part of the city event, so they'll remember this, and also, uh, I will have to cancel this week's down home days, the group called and said to Director D, they were not gonna come, so I'll start those back up later in next year, so I'd hope that they come out and support that.
The Heritage Days, they start up about what time?
Ten o'clock. Ten o'clock. They've got the bounce rooms for the kids, the, uh, petting zoo for the kids. Uh, everything's been lined up for the children's kids.
Good.
When's the tree lighting jacket?
November the thirtieth. I'll, I'll get all that together and give it up the next day.
Remember that, and, uh, as well, and I've talked to Walter about it and that big deal here, I've gotten with a gentleman, and I want to have a write-up done, he's wanting to donate a lot of toys for our kids in our county, so we'll try to get Santa Claus to come to town on the east and west side of the county, and so if anybody knows any kids that are not gonna have a good Christmas this year, be sure to let us know, we're gonna try to have something here in the courthouse and at the community center, and we'll get those dates to come in that way.
You might wanna email principals at schools, they're really good about identifying at old meets.
And when I say a lot of toys, I'm talking about four-foot by four-foot by four-foot pallet right now, and it grows each week, so this has been generously donated by, by the individual, and I told them that, uh, that I'll be sure to get our local paper to come and do it, to do a write-up, he just, you know, it's a God thing, I like to say it was for him to be generous enough, and, uh, so I really appreciate this, this is a long way for a lot of our kids. If anybody knows any of the kids that are, that are in need, this way they can get, get something for Christmas.
All right.
Maybe, y'all might could, uh, run a little ad in paper, you know, if anybody can, I been a buyer of meat somewhere, contact...